I think he's a little bit awful.
So, I'm working tomorrow to...
Don't goose this and fall on the ground and talk to this mess that will no chance.
Listen.
You would have got it. I did. Now, I'll tell you what. My god, Kevin, there. He needs to apologize. Panic. He made some funny stuff. He's trying to go back to old.
Well, you know more about that. I mean, I know nothing about planning. Which may not have Jimmy and Jason explained to me because that's not my thing.
All right.
They all think it's been abandoned, but...
Looks like it's time. If everybody's ready. I don't think we've got anybody else lingering around out there. Since at 6:30, I'd like to welcome everybody to the regularly scheduled December the 7th, 2020 council meeting. We're getting 2020 over with pretty soon. Note that there will be an opportunity for citizens to address the council in the public comments, and we do have a public hearing, of course, tonight. We requested anybody addressing the council sign up approach the podium when called, state your first and last name and your address. And like I said, great turnout tonight for the last meeting of the year, right, guys?
I hope it's great.
You and me both. You and me both. But we do have numbers, so that's a good thing, right? But we do appreciate you guys coming out and spending a little bit of time with us this evening. Without further ado, Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
I certainly will. Mr. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Present.
Ms. Pillion.
Here.
Ms. Quetch.
Here.
And Mayor Webb.
Here. So, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to ask Ms. Pillion to lead us in the pledge of pledges.
Pledge pledges.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bill. And that brings us to item D, the approval of the agenda. We do have a couple of things that I would like to mention. One is that Jimmy has asked us to add in a discussion about vacating a portion of right of way on barter drop in council. You guys received a packet with our things tonight. Did not have time to get that on the agenda before, but we'd like to add that. If you guys don't mind, I would like to add that as the first item on new business under M, if that's okay. And subsequently, I would like to move the presentation of the auditor from Brown and Edwards. We don't want to keep him here all night, so if you guys don't mind, I'd like to move that under G, under the proclamations, if that's okay. If that's okay with you guys, I would entertain a motion to approve both or amend the agenda to reflect both those things.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda.
All right. Motion to amend the agenda to reflect both of the items I was discussing just a moment ago. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. And that was Mr. Owens' second by Mr. Anderson. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Webb.
Aye.
All right. And that brings us right along to the public comments section. And Kim, do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
No, sir.
All right. Well, if no one has signed up, even though we had a great turnout, we'll move right along to the approval of the minutes from the November the 2nd, 2020 meeting. Does anybody have any changes they'd like to add to that? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve those November the 2nd meeting.
I'll make some motion.
All right. Motion by Mr. Anderson to approve the November the 2nd minutes as stated. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pillion. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Webb.
Aye. I don't see any proclamations, so that brings us to our entertainment for the evening. The presentation of the 2019-2020 financial audit for the town of Abington and Brown and Edwards.
Mayor Webb, if I am the entertainment, then you are sorely challenged for entertainment, but we'll give it our best shot. Mayor Webb, members of council, thank you again for the opportunity to present before you today. It seems like last couple of years, every time in Abington, it's snowing when I get here, so that's okay. I enjoy the weather. We are with, mine with Brown, Edwards and Company. We have been the accounting firm, the auditing firm for the town for a few years. Enjoy the relationship that we've had. Obviously, 2020, wow, what a year. Lots changed since I saw you last, and so the town's changed, the world has changed, and so we'll kind of talk about that a little bit. I'm here really to answer questions for you all. We are presenting in draft form. These financial statements are due to the state. They were, used to be due by November 30th. They are now due by December 15th by the state, which gratuitously they did even before COVID-19. So, we're very appreciative of a few extra days this year to get things submitted. So, we're presenting a draft form. The final version will be coming later on in the week. And there's actually one thing in the draft form, particularly regarding a finding that may actually come out at Kim's, Kim and Jordan are going back and forth on one of our potential findings as well. So, that just make you guys aware of that as well. With that in front of you, you have a pretty big package, a comprehensive annual financial report, the town of Abington. This report, I want to make clear, is actually prepared by your pre-auditors, Roderick Moss, Tamara Greer with Roderick Moss and her group. They come in and assist with adjusting the financial statements a year in, preparing the necessary disclosures. That is something that a lot of smaller localities do and can track those services. They've done a great job. They've done that for a number of years. So, you really do kind of have two sets of eyes, I've explained this to Jimmy, looking at it. You have an auditing firm and you have a pre-audit firm that does that. And we do that opposite roles in some other localities across Southwest Virginia. So, I just want to compliment and make sure they get some credit for the work that they've done on this. Our role is to make sure it's accurate. If you move over a few pages in, I'll kind of skip over to our independent auditor's report. This is the meet and meetatatives of why you hire us. We go through what the management's responsibility of the financial statements are, what our responsibility is, and on the next page, what you care most about is the opinions. In this, we expressed an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, as commonly referred to. Means we believe that, we believe the financial statements present fairly in material respects the position of the town and its activities. There's other information, required supplementary information that's discussed in here that talks about how our opinions are impacted by that. I won't go into any details there. Flipping over to page eight, the financial statements, exhibit one, your statement of net position. This is your full accrual financial statements. This is something that generally people do not budget upon. It's not generally what you talk about or discuss from time to time, but this does account, this is similar to where if you were running a business, this is what your business financial statement might look like with assets and liabilities and then in cause or formerly is what you own. If you go down, probably the most critical number is on here, other than the fact that this net position number is not negative. The probably the most critical is to understand where your net position is in the town. So, you have approximately $27.6 million of net position in capital assets. So, this is the capital assets less the debt that you have on the capital assets. You have a little bit of restricted net position, and then probably the most important part number here is the unrestricted net position, and that is really what you're available oftentimes liquid resources. And we'll talk about fund balance here in a moment. Moving on to page nine, exhibit two is just a breakdown of the various components of that. I won't go into any detail, but you had an increase in net position of $985,000 for the year. That doesn't necessarily mean that you really had that much in earnings, et cetera. It just is a measure of this big wide balance sheet that goes into depreciation and other matters. So, I wouldn't look too much into that either. If it's going down and it's going down a lot, then maybe there's a problem. If it's up or down here and there, I don't look too much into it or focus too much on it. Exhibit three, page 10, this is really what you're budgeting on. This is what the fund basis or the governmental fund, fund balance is generally what you're talking about. I'm sure you guys have heard that word and terminology quite a bit. This is what we were discussing when we're talking about fund balance. As you go down to the bottom here, this does not include capital assets. This does not include debt. This is focused on near-term current resources. That's what we're looking at. You're kind of looking at over the next year. It's kind of what this statement is measuring. Probably the most important balance that you have to look at there, you have some restricted fund balance. That's generally, you're going to be your unspent debt proceeds, debt proceeds that we have that we've not yet spent on capital projects. But what you guys are budgeting on and setting financial policies around is this unassigned fund balance, which is right at $5.3 million. I believe you guys do have a minimum fund balance policy where there is a statement in this cap where we decided that finance committee needs to be changed about, you do have a formal policy. We'll put that in there. But we did some math earlier, but it equates to about six months of fund balance. And so, one of the things we talked about and what everybody always asks is, well, how much is too much? And how much do you need? And the answer is, it depends, right? That's what any good consultant will tell you. It depends. Is, but I think one of the things that really kind of has hit home for localities this year is the way in which things that we cannot predict or expect will impact us. The COVID-19 crisis, when I sat here, we sat here a year ago, is not anything we would have predicted here. If I'd have said we'd all be sitting here wearing masks today, what would you have said? Said you've lost your mind, right? That's just what we would be. But the world changes and things happen, and each of these, in these issues, there's winners and there's losers. There just is. And one of the areas in which it's become pretty apparent is those localities that are dependent on lodging and mills and the entertainment and those types of taxes. When people quit driving, it becomes, it becomes an issue. It becomes a matter that we have to address, and towns in particular are dependent upon that because a lot of the property taxes in Virginia, if you're in a town, obviously goes to the counties. And the towns generate a lot of revenue from other sources. So, you know, that is something that, you know, because of a significant action. And so, the months in fund balance, the ability to fund your government, you still have to provide essential services. You still have to provide police. You still have to provide all the things that you must do. I think what it shows is, is being, recognizing that having enough fund balance is not a bad thing. Yes, there can be too much, but having not enough could be worse. And so, I think that's just a commentary regarding that, regarding your position. Kind of moving on, the next statement I'm going to hit on is the exhibit eight, your proprietary fund. This is your, this is really the sewer fund for you guys because your water services are provided outside by another agency outside the town. So, this is your sewer fund. Breakdown, your net position there, as you see, is about 7.3 million. 2.9 of that is unrestricted, which is generally going to be cash and AR-type things. Moving over to page 16, exhibit nine, you had about $3.2 million in revenue there, operating expenses of about $2.7, so a change, a positive change in net position, no loss in the sewer fund. That's oftentimes a fund that is a challenge to keep up with for a lot of localities, quite frankly. So, I think that's a very good sign that, I'm not saying your rates are enough. Please don't take that away from here, okay? Be very clear about that. But it is certainly a challenge that a lot of people have to deal with of keeping that sewer fund self-sufficient. So, I think that's a good and positive sign. On page 21, that's down at the bottom, is what is going to change the minimum unassigned fund balance policy. It says it does not maintain one, but that's not accurate. That needs to be modified. So, just want to clarify that. It will be fixed in the final version. After that, there's a whole lot of discussions about pension and OPEB and all those things. I want to go to note 14, page 59. The only thing I want to summarize is, is a couple of years ago, we started putting pension and OPEB liabilities on the financial statements. That was something that previously, that these liabilities existed, these liabilities, promises to our employees, but we didn't really record them in financial statements. And so, that changed a few years back, and at first we recorded pension and then we recorded OPEB. So, all of those liabilities and those future promises are now within the confines of our balance sheet. And there are some, there's some complicated complications there, and that's what there's about 20 pages of good reading. And I told the vice mayor in the finance committee meeting, it's great information. If you want to go to sleep at night, if you want to tear into those notes. But the key is, is what do we owe our future employees?
Retirees, that's the first thing in the morning. That's our favorite.
Yeah. Yeah. Exciting stuff, right? The key numbers here to me is your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability. Our net pension liability, so this is what is owed to employees of the town, is about $3 million. And so, this is net of our investments, right? So, we have a large investment portfolio, and this is what, now, the good news is, is we don't have to pay $3 million tomorrow. We have to pay $3 million of the life of our current and, you know, current retirees and our future retirees and all those things. This is a actuarial study that is done to determine what a liability is. This is not cash. And in the same way, the net OPEB liability is, in the same way, the largest liability there is your local health, and that's where you allow your retirees to stay on health insurance. And so, that's a liability, a future promise for those retirees. The statistical section, I always encourage you to read because it has good comparative information, historical information, generally 10 years worth of information, always good information to have. A lot of the readers of the financial statements bond under writers, et cetera, enjoy that. The last part in this financial statement, in the very back, is the compliance section. And so, if you'll just, the easiest place to turn is to just page 92, and I'll go over the key points. The most important part here is that we have no significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. If you hear those four words, two together, then you have a problem, and we need to be having a more serious conversation. We have no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. Now, we will have some recommendations for internal control that will be shared with management in draft form later this week, but no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. Now, and we also found no instances of non-compliance material to the financial statement. However, we did have a few findings, possibly two, possibly three, to be determined. Kim's going for two, regarding the things that the state tells us that we have to test and we're required to test. We're not saying that they're extremely important. We're saying the state tells us to test them, and if we find a problem, what we think's a problem, we put it in the report, and so that's where these come from. The Conflicts of Interest Act, that's the one we think may go away. There may be some misinterpretation on dates, but either way, we'll clarify that. If it comes out, Kim was definitely right. If it doesn't come out, we're going to make sure we do it again next year and give it another shot. So, just, Kim tried very hard at doing that. So, please note that it's nobody's fault when this one, inside the government. It's quite frankly like people like you's fault when this one pops up. The budget appropriation one, we talked about that. We talked about that actually with your new finance director as well. The budget appropriation one creates a little bit of an issue because when your pre-auditor comes in, they make certain adjustments to your financial statements. Well, those adjustments cause you to exceed the budget in a couple of categories, and all I'm talking about is like 3,500 bucks in categories, but it's still a budget finding in the state of Virginia if you go over a dollar over the appropriation. So, we've talked about a couple of different options. We've talked about possibly moving to a cash basis type presentation of budget, which is allowed, or to figure out another way. So, we did, I mean, really all it requires is a budget amendment at some point to correct those issues. So, we're going to work on that. The final matter on the highway maintenance, the Weldon Cooper survey on page 93. Last year, this part, this finding was two parts. One was the survey was not performed or not submitted, and two, that work was being done on some ineligible streets, it appeared. And we have a finding like that this year, except the report was submitted, and James and, and I apologize, John is going to work with and trying to figure out exactly what needs to be done on that or what we can do to help correct that into the future. But they're all, quite frankly, very minor compliance items. I'll tell you, I put, these kinds of findings were in more reports of audits that I've done than not. So, nothing significantly major there. The final letter, the required communication with those charges of government, just a nice little two-page letter, three-page letter that you have in front of you. This is also a draft. This just goes through kind of the cliff notes of the audit, some of the major aspects of your accounting practices, including some of the estimates. For example, OPEB and pension we discussed earlier. We talked about there was no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. No corrected or uncorrected misstatements of significance, which is excellent, excellent. And I think that gives town management and the pre-auditor a lot of credit for that. And no real disagreements with management, other than Kim disagreeing that we were right about a finding. Other than that, we're working on that one, though. But with that, I am here to answer any questions that you all may have. And I'm sure you have more important things on the agenda, but we're here for you guys.
All right, counsel. I know that was a lot of information in a very short amount of time. But does anybody have any specific questions that maybe weren't answered in the Finance Committee session?
I don't have any question.
Anything? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you.
You guys spend money in town that we're going to.
I went to Powell's before.
All right, the entertainment for the evening. That does bring us to, get my bearing straight here. We've got a petition, public hearing. We have a public hearing regarding the lease agreement buy-in between the Town of Abingdon, Virginia and the Depot Artists Association Incorporated. I do have one person signed up, Mr. Greg Lilly. So, at this point in time, I guess I opened a public hearing and you can come on up and speak.
Thank you. I am Greg Lilly and I live at 244 Valley Street Northeast. I am also a board member of the Depot Artists Association. I want to thank you for your continued partnership. The Depot Artists Association is a reliable and effective steward of the Depot Building. And we continue to implement improvements to the inside as well as work with Powell's on improvements to the outside. We greatly appreciate having the opportunity to continue to enhance the local economy and to ensure all residents and visitors have affordable access to quality art and art education. I want to invite all the town council, staff, and the public. If they haven't been by lately, come by the Art Depot and see what we're doing. Thank you.
Do we have, since it's a public hearing, do I have to do a second call, Cam? Go ahead and close.
Sure.
All right. All right. Well, thanks, Mr. Lilly. I am charging. You're right. So, with that being said, don't forget that, Jimmy.
Just at this meeting.
With that being said, I guess we'll close the public hearing and move right along. Accurate?
Will we vote on it later?
Yes, it's going to appear later in the agenda. All right. Moving right along to resolutions we have done, which brings us to the first reading of ordinances. And Cam, I guess we're approaching these one at a time. Is that accurate to say or are we going to discuss all of them and then approach them one at a time?
Yeah, I think we can discuss them.
Okay, all in one kind of, okay. All right, so, Mr. Boswell, it's your time to shine.
You keep saying it, I don't feel like I'm shocking.
I would comment, but I won't.
I appreciate it.
We'll be in common.
You'll capture it in the minutes. Thank you, Mayor Webb and Honorable Counsel. This is a, the town manager has requested that this matter be placed on the agenda after discussion with several, several members of the council. And I have talked into several of you as well about this matter. It's for consideration of allowing short-term rentals as a special use in the B1 Limited Business District as well as the B2 and B3 districts. This matter was discussed at several Planning Commission meetings, including the June 22nd and July 22nd meeting and at a public hearing before the Planning Commission on August 24th. During that meeting, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the amendment. The matter was then discussed at the September 24th Town Council Work Session and a public hearing was held at the regular council meeting on October 5th. During that meeting, the council rejected and tabled a proposal. Afterwards, I sent a memo to the council concerning this matter on November 11th, along with a map showing the affected districts upon approval of the amendment. And at this time, I'd be happy to address any concerns or questions that you may have concerning the amendment.
All right, counsel. I know we've talked about this in some detail and we have had some more discussion. And what questions do we have for Mr. Boswell?
I have no questions.
No questions? No questions? Okay. You've done it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. All right. So, then that brings up, I guess, as Cam and I were talking before, the three different sections. The first is the proposed zoning tax amendment to Article 10-B-1 Limited Business District, Section 10-2, same special uses, to allow short-term rentals as a special use. Counsel?
Shall the matter be rejected?
Yeah. Shall the matter be rejected or shall the proposal be rejected? Hearing no rejection, we'll move to number two. Proposed zoning tax amendment to Article 11-B2, General Business District, Section 11-2, same special uses to allow short-term rentals as a special use. And again, counsel, shall the proposal be rejected? I haven't heard a rejection yet, so we'll move to number three. The proposed zoning tax amendment to Article 12-B3, Central Business District, Section 12-2, same special uses to allow short-term rentals as a special use. Shall the proposal be rejected? All right. Since we haven't rejected anything, I guess we need to take action, Cam?
That'll just move on to the second reading.
Okay. Fair enough. It will move to the second reading.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to clarify, when we revise the zoning code, we will be working with Jason and Jason will work with the consultant that we hire. There'll be some structural changes to the way we format the different zoning classifications. So, if, for instance, you have, you have a use that's in a less restrictive district that's going to be allowed in other districts, we wouldn't have to necessarily amend multiple sections of the code. You could just allow it in one of the districts and it would be then allowed in other districts. So, that is one, I think, improvement. And I think one, it's best practice per guidelines. So, that will be one benefit that'll come out of, come out of the revised zoning code. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Sure.
So, in other words, if it's allowed in one district, it's okay for the other?
It's allowed in the lowest, Steve, but in the high, then it would be allowed by, right? In the highest?
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Moving right along, we don't have any second readings or consideration of any bids. So, that brings us to the new business. And as we amended the agenda before, I think we placed on M1 the discussion regarding vacating a portion of Right-Away on Barter Drive. And I believe Mr. Doo is going to take care of that for us.
Jason, good evening, counsel. How are you doing this evening? Here to present this to you, this Right-Away vacation request was presented to us. Too late to get noticed in for a public hearing, which is typically the first step. But we thought it would be advantageous to both counsel and to the petitioner to go ahead and get it in front of you and start the discussion. Typically, it's, the process is detailed out in state code. So, we follow state code to the letter for any time we have a request like this. And typically, it is vacation of an unopened right-of-way, which basically means that we don't maintain it as part of our street system. A lot of cases, it's just open land. And a lot of times, the adjacent property owners maintain that land for, you know, sometimes years and many years. So, for various reasons, they occasionally petition the town to vacate that right-of-way. And when we follow that process and ultimately, if it does result in a resolution by Town Council to vacate the right-of-way, then the property that is within that right-of-way ends up being doled out to the adjacent property owners. So, in a nutshell, that's the process. It's going to come before you again in the January council meeting, where we'll have a formal public hearing and present to you a plat showing the proposed right-of-way vacation. We will also, at that meeting, per state code, be defining or forming, I should say, a three-member Board of Viewers is what it's called. Three members of the community that take a look at all the information provided to them and they make a determination whether or not the town is, again, in the words that's in the state code, if the town is inconvenienced by the vacation of the right-of-way. So, all that information will be presented to you. And then the Board of Viewers will come back at the February meeting if the process continues. And they'll present their findings and staff will deliver our recommendation or our opinions as well. And again, if everything follows through at that point at the February meeting, then counsel would vote by resolution whether or not to vacate the right-of-way. So, this one in particular is a small stretch of unopened right-of-way off of Barter Drive. And it's, in the mapping we have, it's called out as White Avenue. And it's a north-south piece of right-of-way that used to be connected to an east-west piece of right-of-way that's part of White Street, which we do maintain the eastern portion of that. So, if, at this point, I guess, again, it's just open for discussion, informal discussion now. If you have any questions about the process or about this location in particular, be happy to entertain those now. Otherwise, we will be presenting more information to you at the January meeting.
I have a question for John. John, the state code, because, you know, I'm not familiar with that section since I've been in Virginia for a year and a half. But does that, when the petitioner submits that, are we required then to move forward with it? Right, maybe that's a question for, okay, and that's why I wanted to make sure that we didn't need to do anything here.
Right, that would be, the petition is the first step, which has been filed. The second step is a public hearing and then counsel would vote on it. So, counsel is the one who would appoint the Board of Viewers. I think technically, counsel could vote without a Board of Viewers, but counsel would have to take some action first.
So, I think our thought was, I guess, if there was any major objections, then we wouldn't move forward with that. But unless there's any issues, then that's still the plan then is to bring it to the next meeting. I just didn't know if we needed action. Now, just to make sure everybody was comfortable, or at least a consensus, to make sure that there's no heartburn over proceeding with this and publishing the public hearing.
Right. Right, at the council meeting, then there would be some discussion about whether there was, they didn't want to do it at all. And I think it would be timely, maybe now, if they don't want to do it at all. But the formal action would be to say we need White Avenue and we're not going to vacate it. And so, we're not going to appoint a Board of Viewers. Or we're going to decide ourselves, or we need some input from.
I just didn't know if the petition automatically triggered the public hearing or like if the five council members, this is horrible, not that they're going, this is a horrible idea. Let's just not even go down this road. But as long as there's no objection from this council, we can still move forward.
For what it's worth to me, for your information as well, in recent past, there was a council group that did, you know, at one time, determined that they did not want to receive any more petitions for right-of-way vacation.
Somebody could fill the petition and they would do nothing.
Right. There was a feeling among the council at that time that they didn't want to give up land, I guess. I guess you'd say.
It's not like a zoning petition where it triggers an automatic.
Right, sure.
In some cases, this is still the discretion of the Town Council. But, I mean, my opinion is, anytime there's a reasonable request to vacate right-of-way, I don't see a reason to not, to not at least consider it.
And one thing we tried to do in the past, when we, when we were contacted by residents who were considering the petition is, you know, we have in the past tried to gauge councils openness to even considering the petition because it quickly becomes somewhat costly to the petitioners. They have to pay the cost for the advertisement in the paper, for the announcements for the public hearing. And eventually, if it continues, then they have to pay the cost for a plat. So, we have in the past tried to gauge at least if there was even going to be a consideration of a petition for that reason, just for their interest.
It's actually on White, I apologize, it's not Barter Drive, it's White Drive. This petition.
White Avenue, it's a section of what's called White Avenue, just off of.
It's off of White Street, White Avenue, is it extended?
Yeah, I wish we had, I don't know if we have the ability to pull up the GIS, but it's, it actually comes off of Barter Drive to the south, in the direction of the south. And it meets up with what was formerly unopened right-of-way for White Street. It goes east-west over to White's Mills, that road. We only maintain a portion of what was White Street right-of-way. It's the paved section there off of Tanner Street.
I know exactly where it is.
Scavvy, you should have a map in front of you there.
Oh, is it? Okay.
So, so I guess then what you're asking us is, is the appetite to give you guys to go ahead and go ahead and.
If there's not an absolute, you know, exclusion or no desire at all. And that, again, I only ask that or say that because that was the approach that a previous council had. But, you know, for us to be open to consider it, the petitioner has followed all of the steps that are required by state code at this point, submitted a petition to us. They've actually already done a plat. They're already ahead of the game. But they will incur the cost of the advertisement for the public hearing if we move forward.
Yeah, so we don't want to cost them anything if we're not going to consider it, I guess.
Does that make sense?
Do we have to make a motion on this? I would suggest that we move forward on this property to vacate it. You know, I'm very comfortable with that.
So, again, in that case, then, we'll be presenting more information to you at the January meeting. And if we move forward, then you all will be appointing a Board of Viewers, a three-person Board of Viewers. They are also, per state code, paid $50 apiece for their service and that cost is also.
Is that per hour? Per hour?
It's just $50 for the entire.
Was that adjusted for inflation?
No, I don't think so. But, and there's no requirement currently in there for them to spend money within town limits as they do their work.
So, I guess then, counsel, we'd probably need to be thinking about three people that we want to appoint to this.
And we would be happy to make some recommendations based on past people that have performed that duty as well.
But Kim does have a list of the, of the three members that were current, that were on the previous one. So, what she was going to do, unless the council has any objections, was to reach out to them to see if they're still interested and we can disseminate that information. And then we'll at least be ready when that first meeting in January comes. If one of them is not interested, we'll discuss with you, the mayor, and decide if there's anybody else that might be.
It seemed to be very beneficiary to, towards the town, yeah.
I think so.
As far as upkeep.
The difference between our property and private people's property is that we can't be adversely possessed against or other types of easement that can be created over time. So, if it were between two private landowners, this probably would be handled in that way. But we have to formally give up property that we have dedicated as a right-of-way. So, this is the process. But it doesn't look like it's been used by the town.
No, and that's, you know, we could have that discussion too about there are lots of unopened rights-of-way in town that we do not have maintenance obligations for. So, I don't know if it's a question, Cam, of whether or not, we don't own the property. I don't know that we own the property, but we have the responsibility to manage whether the right-of-way is vacated. I know that.
Probably depends like.
That's the most larger discussion.
It sounds like, from what I'm hearing, that you've got our grace to move on.
Okay. Then we will proceed and present more information to you at the January meeting.
Thank you. Thanks, John. All right. And that moves us to item two under new business, the lease agreement buy-in between the Town of Abingdon, Virginia and Depot's Artists Association. Mr. Moraney, you can now speak.
Yes, this is, this is the item that we presented for the public hearing. And this is just the formal lease agreement. We met the statutory requirement for holding the public hearing. Similar terms, the lease agreement did expire in this month. I think it expired, was it December 2nd? Yeah, so. it expired, was it December 2nd? Yeah, so, sure, this was, this was the first opportunity we had to get it, get it to the council. So any questions, if there's any questions about the terms.
So there wasn't a lot of changes?
No, there was no material changes. We changed the format a little bit. Cam, Cam revised the format. It was, it was not a format that we liked, so we changed it, but as far as the.
It's a beautiful document now.
And it was a, it was a five-year lease, correct? Correct, yeah. And so we, same, same terms.
What's that?
There was one for a dollar lease.
Yeah, for a dollar. Okay. Well, I assume, council, we had time to peruse and read through and all that. So I guess at this point in time, you need us to take action, right?
Yeah, we would, staffs recommended that we, council approved the lease. We did, I think we did add the, some addressing and tax method information that wasn't included in there before. That was the one, one thing that we did to make it, make it cleaner.
I'll make a motion that we approve the lease.
All right. Excellent. Have a motion by Mr. Owens to approve the lease. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Pillion. Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Webb.
Aye. Thank you, Jimmy. And we're keeping Jimmy on the hook. So number three is the declaration of the 2006 Chevy Suburban as surplus property.
Yeah, I just need, request a motion from the council to surplus this vehicle, which was a fire department vehicle. It's not, no longer in use. We'd like to just post it on the, the government surplus website and we just need council authorization to surplus this vehicle.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about that for Jimmy? Your standard procedure? Okay, hearing none. I'd entertain a motion to declare that as a surplus property.
I might throw a motion.
Motion by Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Owens. Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Webb.
Aye. And that brings us to old business. Council, we discussed this last time, but we're going to touch on it again, the town holidays for 2021 calendar year. Mr. Moraney?
Yes, I distributed the, for the current town holidays right now. We also included Washington County and the city of Bristol, just so you can see what some of the local jurisdictions have in terms of holidays. Just, unless there's any other questions or discussion that was generated from the last council meeting, staffs, my request is to add Juneteenth as a holiday, as the state has, has done that, has designated that as a holiday, and just to adopt the holidays as presented with the addition of that, of that holiday, unless there's any other desire to revise that in any way. That would be my recommendation.
So council, we had the, in our packet, the comparison of a couple of local municipalities and, and I'm understanding Jimmy to say that he just wants us to adopt it as is with the addition of Juneteenth, which has become a state holiday?
Yeah, it's been designated as a state holiday.
Okay.
Sure.
So if you guys are okay with that, I would entertain a motion to do so.
I'll send it.
Motion by Ms. Pillion to adopt the town holiday calendar for 2021 with the addition of Juneteenth. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Vice Mayor Quetch. Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Webb.
Aye. And now that brings us to miscellaneous business and communication from the town manager, number one tourism update, which is the entertainment for the evening. Welcome, Tanya and Amanda. We are excited to hear what you have to say.
Good evening, Mayor Webb, council. We just want to kind of, kind of give you a rundown of what we've been doing with all of the CARES money that you graciously allocated to us. So this is Amanda Livingston and she's going to kick this off.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I really appreciate being here tonight and I do want to reiterate thank you. I know this has been an incredibly difficult year and I appreciate your support of what we do and your understanding of what tourism brings to our community and that we are here to serve our small businesses and our citizens. So that really, that support means a lot. This is going to be a fun presentation. I live and breathe tourism and it is something I'm really passionate about. So we are, as you know, one of the coolest small towns in America. That is not because of what we do. Our job is to tell other people about that because there are, believe it or not, a lot of people out there who don't yet know that. So one of the bright spots for Abingdon in the midst of this incredibly difficult 2020 is that we are really well situated for a road trip. We are, I'll take this off, we are within a day's drive of fully half of the US population. So that has been a saving grace for us. We've had the outdoor recreation and the small-town, safe-feeling community that has been what people want when they travel in 2020. So we're, we have been taking advantage of that in every moment. So one of the greatest challenges of my 20-year marketing career has been how do you advertise during a pandemic? Thanks to the CARES Act funding, which you all allowed to be allocated towards tourism marketing, we have been able to host a press trip for high, for high-profile travel writers. We've been able to advertise primarily in digital, social media, search engine marketing. I'm going to dive into this just a little bit before your eyes glaze over. We've been able to support local businesses directly by advertising on their behalf, specifically during the holiday shopping season right now. And we've been able to look forward to 2021 and print some brochures, maps and guides that are going to last us through 2021, that again, are going to connect the visitors with small businesses. We've also been able to maintain a welcome center four days a week, which is a reduction from the seven that we were doing before. And that is, that is sort of an under, underappreciated thing in that it's not just smiling and welcoming people and helping them find the bathrooms, it's actively pushing those visitors to connect them with attractions and with small businesses, restaurants, where do I eat, where do I stay? In 2020, the Virginia Creeper Trail has seen incredible traffic and we knew that and so we relocated our temporary operations over to the trailhead so that we could intercept those folks, get them downtown and have them spend money while they're here. That's ultimately how our success is judged. Also want to talk a little bit, just in a bigger picture, all of the efforts that we do kind of work together in, in a synchronized way. So it all feeds into the same thing. We're, we're trying to get all of these visitors to our website to discover what we have and then from there to explore the website and then to send them out into making an actual trip. So for instance, a press trip is where we host travel journalists. We pay for part of their trip to Abingdon. We hire a PR company to find the best people who are going to give us the best coverage of Abingdon. And then we solicit support from our partners to host them. For instance, some hotel stays comp, some discounts on meals and complimentary desserts that supplement our budget to make it go further. So in this case, we did spend some of the CARES Act money as approved on that. We also had in-kind contributions of over nineteen hundred dollars from local businesses to stretch those dollars even further. So we, we cannot do what we do without the active partnership of the local businesses. Anything else you want to add on this slide, Tanya?
I think you did very well.
All right. And this is just some pretty pictures, just to liven it up a little bit. We try to be really consistent with our messaging. When we talk about what Abingdon, makes Abingdon so special, we talk about our arts and culture, we talk about our dining. We are the best small-town food scene in America, two years in a row. We talk about our history and we talk about our outdoor recreation. So those are the themes that we reiterate in every single thing that we do. We also, I mentioned our PR campaign. This is our third year of working with an actual PR firm. We selected a firm that specializes in tourism and they specialize in the southeast and we've really started to see huge results from that over the course of the last few years. And Kim, if you would hit that alt tab, and there's just three tabs open, we're just going to, they're in your packet, you can click on them and read them. We try to post them always on the social media, so I hope you do follow, visit Abingdon, Virginia. And these are, some of them are roundups. Atlanta Journal Constitution, only in your state. One of our most valuable placements was a writer who's based in DC and she had been here before and had written kind of a smaller article. I was frankly, like, a little bit disappointed because it wasn't the payoff I wanted. A year later, she writes this article for the Washington Post. Then it gets picked up by another online outlet. It gets picked up by a local paper in Texas and then it gets picked up by the Atlanta Journal Constitution. And so because I've maintained a relationship by email with Erin Gifford, we've been able to kind of milk that relationship. So you can alt-tab back over there. And again, I'll get back to this a little, in a little bit when we talk about our, our visitors to the website, but those PR mentions again are always trying to get that name recognition and drive people to the website. So this is just a very brief recap of our platforms where we communicate to people. We've spent about the last five years really aggressively building up our email list, our social media followers, our website visits and all of that, because once we have those people interested in what we say, we don't necessarily have to pay each time we communicate with them. You know, we've made the investment to get them here to follow us and now we can communicate with them, keep them updated and have a conversation with them. So as you can see, our numbers are looking pretty good. They could always be better and that's our goal. On the right, you have website traffic and just, these are jargon. This is provided by Google, so these are their terms. But just really briefly, organic search means somebody opened up their browser and they searched for something. So it's organic in that we didn't necessarily pay to have that click. It doesn't mean it's free. They had to, there's a reason that they were searching for Abingdon. You know, they didn't just come out of nowhere. It doesn't happen in a vacuum. So we put that website on every single print ad that we do. We put it on every radio ad. We put it on every press release. We put it on every communication. So there's, it doesn't happen in a vacuum, but it is a sign of a healthy brand awareness. The paid search are specifically advertisements that we ran with Google. So those are those sponsored links at the top that we pay per click each time they, they click and find us. Social media is pretty self-explanatory and then direct and email are, direct means, it kind of a catch-all, it means basically Google doesn't know. They don't really, it's just kind of a miscellaneous. So that's where we're getting our, our folks from. And then just briefly, who are our website visitors? And Tanya and I talked about this. I want to be really clear. These are not visitors to Abingdon. These are visitors to the website. So this is the data we have right now. We had been planning in 2020 to, we had some grant funding to do a research study to update the 2012 data for obvious reasons. This was not the year for that. So I hope that someday we can, we can do that and update it. But for the website visitors, as you can see, they're primarily coming from Virginia, Tennessee and North Carolina. No surprises there. The rest of the states, a lot of southeastern presence. We know that we're a drive market. We're a road trip market. We're drawing from the southeast and so when we place advertisements, we always keep that in mind. Advertisement in the LA Times would be lovely, but frankly, I think that would be a waste of taxpayer dollars. You know, we want to fish where the fish are. Most of our visitors to the website are female. No surprises there. Women make the shopping decisions and women plan the family trips. We know that. And then you can see on the age range, it's a pretty good breakdown, but we, we do skew a little older. So we've got a lot of couples who are traveling. They either have older children or they're, they're childless.
Can I, can I inter, how do they know if it's a male or female? Is it because somebody signed into their Google account?
Yes. Google, it's, they, they are.
But not everybody's.
They're mining your data.
Right, so not everybody's signed in though, so do they just use that as a sample?
I'd have to delve into exactly how, they have their ways. They have.
They will find you. They know who you are and they know where you live.
They know exactly what you're doing.
It is, it is a little frightening. They, they know more about you than you think they do. But yeah, that, that's Google data. Same with the age too. Somehow they know. So, and then as you can see, the vast majority of the users are using their phones to browse our website. So that was, we were invested in a new website about two years ago this month and so we, we made sure it was mobile-friendly. And please jump in if, I try to stay away from jargon, but please step in if you have any questions. And so Tanya, I'll turn it over to you to talk a little bit about the, the grant activities.
Well, I am very excited to announce that we got a signed contract from DHCD last week. So we are moving forward with the food grant, with the prepared meals. So we'll be running an ad hopefully this week in the paper and receiving applications for that. So we hope to hit the ground running about January the 4th and that will hopefully help all of these restaurants to get through the winter. We did a grant with AEP and a company called EVGO for car charger. So we will be getting an electric car charger installed at Depot Square very soon. We did a FEMA grant for essential workers. So we submitted about fifty-four thousand dollars in reimbursements last week. So we'll, we'll wait to hear from that, see if we get that, to get that back. We're working on a Virginia Outdoors Foundation Get Outdoors grant that would help us with the design of a pump track or a skills track for bikers on the triangle that we received as a donation last year. So looking forward to seeing if we can, we can get that. We have submitted a request for some outdoor heaters. We don't have those in yet, so I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we get those before the CARES expires. We're working with the EDA and my department, I was offering a 50-50 facade improvement grants to folks who were not in the Main Street footprint for the last few years. So I have a couple of people interested in that and the EDA decided this year that they would do their own and they've offered three. So we do have two applications for the EDAs and the EDA did decide they wanted to work in the Main Street footprint for this one. So hopefully we'll be dispersing that money. The Washington Bound, Washington County Business Challenge will begin in January, so we're very excited about that, trying to spread the word. So if you all know anybody who's interested in opening a small business or expanding the business that they have, they could be eligible for five thousand dollars. We're also still working with the video company that we hired from Roanoke to come in and do our economic development videos. Those are not complete yet, so hopefully we will, we'll get those before the end of the year. So we just wanted to kind of let you guys know what we've been up to and see if you have any questions. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
The economic development videos, what are these exactly?
This is a six-minute video that, that goes from downtown livability. We visited, we visited some apartments. We visited some new businesses and businesses that had done things differently. So one of our interviews was at, at the tavern under the pergola that he put up to, to show that we could, you know, that we kind of moved with the, what was needed. Cam has done some things that differently at the brewery, so we went there. We interviewed the Girl and the Raven and Wolf Hills Coffee, really trying to get some of the businesses that were brand new and why they opened up here. And we'll be able to split that into smaller videos for marketing purposes. They did the tech park. We did an interview with Kathy Lowe at the incubator and we filmed at the incubator. We did the Southwest Higher Education Center, VHCC, and then Whitney Bonham had them out into the county and some of the industrial parks, interviewed the service authority so that we could talk about the infrastructure and the county and Abingdon together, what, what all we have to offer.
I was going to say, the impetus to this was, for some of the council members who weren't here prior to July 1st, as you've heard, we've forgiven Amanda's of the CARES Act money, we were given, we were allocated funds from the county, which came down from the federal government, and CARES Act money and there were certain uses. At first, it was PPE and it was, you know, standard safety equipment, like, you know, things to separate people and help in buildings, signage and things like that. Then they expanded, the Department of Treasury expanded the uses and they included funds marketing and DMOs, destination marketing organizations, which we are. That is why we're able to do some of these things. Otherwise, we would not have been able to, to fund these because we did make some, you know, significant reductions in our, in our budget. So we were able to come up with these creative solutions, try to market Abingdon and still fall under the guidelines of the program. And that's where that promotional, that economic development video came in. It was actually something the county had actually initiated, had started and Tanya's idea was, well, why don't we just go in together and we'll use a portion of our, our funds. So it was a Washington County slash Abingdon venture. So I wanted to give everybody the background on that, so.
So site selectors who were looking for places to open businesses or land to develop couldn't travel during COVID. So they opened up the doors to say, okay, let's let them do some videos so that site selectors can actually see the community. so that site selectors can actually see the community. So we did interviews. We flew drones. So very excited about the end product.
The videos are on the website, right?
They will be.
Okay.
Yep.
Council, any other questions for?
Thank you. I would like to thank you guys for all your hard work. I know it's been a very challenging time, but thank you for your dedication and hard work.
For all of us. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
All right. Since we did have the entertainment for the night, it's good news. Excellent. That moves us to Jimmy, discussion regarding scheduling for future council meetings. How, I guess it's really going to be Kim.
Yeah, well.
How far do we want to go?
Well, for the next calendar year, I guess, that's sort of what Kim was wanting.
Or six months?
Let's do six months.
Yeah, I wanted to let everybody know in this discussion though that, you know, things have, as far as council actions, they have seemed to slow down since the fall. And certainly I don't think there's a need to have a work session this month. I think it would actually fall way too close to Christmas. I think even the county doesn't have a second meeting in December. So there's no plan on having a mid-month meeting this month. But I just want to, I guess, advise you that if it's not necessary to have a mid-month meeting, I'm not against it. We might still, we probably will need one maybe in January. But I want to be maybe open to, with some of the restrictions in place with public gatherings. We don't, it might not be wise to schedule all of the work sessions in advance. And so that might make it easier for you and me. Is that, what do you think, Kim? Maybe we just set the regular meetings and then take the work sessions maybe every two months at a time? Or is that, you good with that?
It would be nice to have them set, just in case something comes up.
So you do want, you do want them set then?
Just a couple of months.
Just a couple of months, okay.
Like January, February for now.
Okay.
Don't forget then we're heading into budget, so we've got some of those things.
Well, that's true. When we get into the budget next year, yeah. So more than likely, when it starts in March, we'll probably be needing to have those two. But probably January, February, we might only need one work session in those two months. But we'll just see how it goes.
Historically, the second meeting has always been on a Thursday. Is that correct?
I don't think so.
No, I think it was mostly just to accommodate the various council member's schedule.
Just kind of depends on where it falls in the month. Yeah, unfortunately, my schedule historically has dictated some of that because I.
Yeah, for me, as long as it's consistently the same day every month, it works good. Because that way I can plan out for the whole year. Because my schedule fills up pretty quick.
Oh, sure, sure.
Well, I mean, the regular council meetings will always be on the first Monday.
I'll talk about the second.
I mean, that's really up to you on when to set those meetings. It's something you guys can decide.
So just looking forward, I guess the first Monday, of course, is the fourth. So that will, if there's no conflict, that will be the regular scheduled January council meeting. And if you guys want to schedule a January work session, we're trying to do it, what, two weeks after essentially? So it'd be sometime during the 18th to 22nd.
And we're closed on the 18th.
We're closed on the 18th.
You're working 18th.
Yeah, so the 19th. Why don't we do the 19th, tentatively for a.
Work session.
Work session.
Let's do 2:30, 2:30. And by that, and just so everybody knows that we do set them by that first meeting in January, we'll have an idea whether or not we think it'll be necessary to have it. But like, you know, Kim said, when we get closer to budget, we'll definitely be having, having them unless something really goes.
Yep, so that's the fourth and the 19th at 2:30 in January, tentatively. For the 19th, the fourth is set. And for February. Looks like the first Monday actually falls on the first. So that'll be the regular scheduled meeting unless we get some disaster of a conflict.
It might be too cold to have a meeting.
Yeah, probably will be. So two weeks later, of course, would put us the 15th through the 19th.
16th.
The 16th would work with me, if that's okay with you guys.
It's okay.
Work session tentatively from 2:30 on the 16th. So that's the first and the 16th.
Traditionally, we do our non-departmental in March.
Our non-departmental in March?
Yes, during one of the budget sessions. So it would be helpful if I'm sending out the letter first to January to be able to tell them.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and look at that.
Do you do those on the, I can't remember because the schedule changes here. Did we do that on the same as the work session, whatever you're saying?
No.
We have, we have a separate meeting scheduled, that's right.
Okay.
So that would work for me again.
Okay, so for March, the first, of course, is the, the first Monday. So March the first, that's easy. That's our regular scheduled meeting. Two weeks later, the 16th, a Tuesday would work, if that would work with you guys, for a work session. Do we want to go ahead and schedule the non-departmentals for that day?
How about we do the non-departmentals? And if we have to do the work session, then we will.
All right, so let's, let's say non-departmentals and possible work session on the 16th.
Yeah, I think it would be useful to have it on the same day because it might not be as, might be a process.
Do, do we still want to do 2:30, council? How long historically, Donna, have we had non-departmentals? A couple hours?
They might be able to be here on the 16th.
16th is not going to work for you? Okay.
My children haven't, I mean, it's, I can, I can maybe change it. My children have an appointment in Knoxville, but I can maybe change it if it's going to. I can call tomorrow and change it. I don't want to mess up everybody else's schedule because of me. Do it and I'll change the appointment, it's fine. I'm sorry, I'll change it.
It's quite all right. I mean, I don't.
No, 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 no.
Okay, all right. So we're going to stick with the 16th for right now. Scambo, that'll be with you.
Now, I'm just thinking out loud, we have a telehealth meeting first with them, and so I may not have to go. We may not have to go. We have a virtual appointment first, so anyway.
So for Tuesday, the 16th, if we're doing non-departmentals, that'll probably take a couple of hours, I would suspect. And we're probably going to have to end up doing phone calls.
Right.
With, with circumstances as they are.
Yeah, I mean, I think the last time there were, you know, 10 minutes. I mean, I think.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, yeah, I think they were five minutes.
Why don't we say 1 o'clock?
You want to do 1 o'clock? Okay, that's what I was getting at, was the time for that day. Can you do 1 o'clock, Mr. Owens, doctor? Okay, let's do 1 PM to 16th for non-departmentals and potential work session.
And then maybe where we only have the non-departmentals or vice versa.
Right, right. And, and we're probably going to have some other budget items in March as well, right?
Yeah, probably.
But we'll kind of, that's the one that we've got to send a letter out, January 1st.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So that's the most time sensitive. Okay, so March the 1st and the 16th then. All right, moving right along to April. Looks like the 5th, we got off of the 1st, but the 5th is the regular scheduled meeting. Two weeks later, how about Thursday, the 22nd for a potential work session? Work, okay?
Thursday.
Thursday, the 22nd, let's do 2:30. Potential work session. Anything else in April, Jimmy, Kim?
Like you said, I'm sure we have some budget things.
We'll kind of, okay, play that back here because the budget's a little more time intensive, of course.
I mean, I'd rather do the budget, and just like we did last year, and even though things change, I would, I don't want to have a separate, really long, separate budget work session. If we can avoid that.
Sure.
I'd rather just try to do it efficiently at the work session if we can.
Okay, so for May, we're looking at the 3rd for the regular scheduled meeting. And the 20th, Thursday, the 20th is a potential work session if we have one that month. Y'all want to do Thursday, the 20th possibility for you guys?
It's good for them.
Okay, let's tentatively schedule it for then for 2:30. So that's May the 3rd and the 20th. And then June, the 7th is going to be our regular scheduled meeting. And I say we stop about right there. June, what, June the 7th will be the regular scheduled council meeting. We'll probably eyeball the 22nd for a work session. Is that okay with you? If, so the 22nd work session, if necessary. Sometimes June gets kind of crazy with people being on vacation and whatnot.
Well, not only that, but this year, we'll be in a position to have the budget adopted on June 7th. Whereas last year, it was really condensed because things change. It's possible, unless it's other pressing items that we might not need to have one in the middle of the month. But we'll see.
Okay, so June, the 7th and the 22nd. And I say we stop there because we're getting kind of far down the road. So.
Mayor, I do have one thing under my section before we move on to.
Yes.
To council member reports. Chief Olbert, I had, I had asked him, with all the excitement yesterday in town, I just wanted to give, let him provide a brief report on, on what happened yesterday.
Sure. Yeah, I've got a couple of texts about helicopters.
Just because I was getting, yeah, those were the, those were the federal government, the black helicopter.
Just for the record, we did not pay for those helicopters, right?
Just wanted to let everybody know.
Technically.
Yeah, your tax money went to it. Your state taxes went to it. First off, my disclaimer is this was a Washington County Sheriff's Office case. So I can't go into a whole lot of details about the criminal charges. There was at least two attempted capital murder charges coming out of this. And it looks like maybe one more is coming from the state police. But just a quick brief, since we were on scene, we were involved in some of this, was it was a traffic stop that was initiated by the Washington County Sheriff's Office on 81. Suspect was traveling south on 81. They stopped, he left the traffic stop. The deputies started the pursuit. It was very early on that you could tell this was a reckless disregard for community safety, for law enforcement's safety, as he crashed a Virginia state trooper at one point during the chase. He did get off exit 14 the wrong way. He got off on the oncoming ramp, the southbound. He caused a couple crashes getting off. He comes through town. Our officer picked up the chase at this point because another state trooper vehicle had been disabled in a collision with the suspect. Our officers chased him through town. The speeds were pretty high, so our officers kind of backed off a little bit at this point. They were able to observe that he was going over to Russell Road during the chase. And eventually, suspect got onto Wally Street, up Page Street, and abandoned his vehicle there at the intersection of Taylor and Page Street where he fled on foot. At this point, we set up a perimeter. I arrived on scene a little while later. And so did multiple other agencies came to help. And we searched for a while. Tenille came out. She did the social media thing to alert all the residents of town. And what a tremendous support they were. I can't, I can't say how grateful I am for the community here in Abingdon. People kind of stayed indoors. We'd had a limited descriptor of the suspect so that people stayed inside so that we could more easily tell if he took off running or if he was in a particular location. People were vigilant. They were watched everywhere within town. We knew that we kind of had him in the perimeter because we weren't getting a lot of calls about suspicious people walking around. So eventually, we got a call that he did emerge from one hiding spot, ran across a couple of backyards to another hiding spot. We didn't know where he went. We just knew that he went, that he got up and started running in a particular direction. So we all responded back to that area. Mr. Owens got some great security going on at that point. But eventually, the Washington County Sheriff's Office, their tact team retraced and were able to locate the suspect in a vacant house. This is yet again, another great cooperation amongst the town of Abingdon Police Department, the Washington County Sheriff's Office. Virginia State Police provided the helicopter and later on a fixed wing aircraft to help us out, as well as many troopers that arrived on scene. US Forestry Department provided a K-9 unit for us to help out. The state police K-9 and the Washington County K-9 was there. And the US Marshal Service also arrived on scene. I hope I didn't forget anybody. But I can't, I can't stress enough the importance of our relationship with the other law enforcement entities, how they all converge to increase our personnel. I did have quite a few officers come out on their Sunday day off to come and help. It was nice to know that they were calling me and saying, hey, can I come out for this? Which was very nice. Even had Tenille come in to answer the phones and to do all the alerts. So that was a quick brief. But yeah, the, the community was great. They were outstanding on this. Even when it turned dark, porch lights started going on. People started calling, hey, come check my shed, which is great for us. I mean, that's consent, to come look at people's property. But just to make sure that everything was great.
Thank God, not running.
Police has seized forfeiture fund.
That's right. No, but the community was spectacular in supporting us. We didn't, we didn't get a lot of, we just got a lot of help from them. And anything that was suspicious, they would call in, which helped out tremendously.
Well, I have to say, I felt very informed. And not because I'm currently sitting as the mayor, but through the, all the outreach from Tenille. I think she did a fantastic job with the social media. It didn't take long. And, and, you know, we saw her threads before we saw the news outlets.
In the news outlets, I think they did a good job.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
Information from.
I felt very informed, felt very safe about what I was doing. I think the community really, you know, those, those things were, were very, very important to us all feeling safe. And, you know, great job.
Well, thank you.
Living in that community was quite impressive to see what was going on. You know, I had a good bird's eye view of it.
Yeah, I mean, it all, it worked out at the end. We finally got him. It took a little while, but we found him.
Fantastic work. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Keep your crown on the hook. Thank you, Jimmy, for bringing that to our attention. That is very nice to hear, that update. Anything else, Jimmy, for the?
I don't have anything else.
Excellent. That brings us to council member reports. Do we have any reports, council members? Anybody like to make a report? No? No? Well, I would like to, just for a moment, say, you know, since this is our last meeting of the year, at least that we know about. I, I would like to say thank you to all the, the sitting council members. You guys have done a lot of hard work. And I know this has been a very challenging time. A thank you to Cam, Kim, Jimmy, and the rest of the employees. I think everybody has, has really stepped up during very challenging and trying times. This, the masks aren't comfortable for anybody, as you can tell. But, but we have persevered and endured. The town of Abingdon is in a good place. And I say it all the time when I interview with the paper and so on and so forth. Even in the worst of times, Abingdon is a great place to live. And, and we have great employees. And I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work and dedication. It means a lot.
I want to add, add one thing to that, mayor. I just want to recognize the staff for being very proactive and conscious about the COVID pandemic. I mean, we, I want to brag that basically the, the, the local health district looks at the town of Abingdon as a model and has told that to our staff several times. And the way that we are internally dealing with it, with our, our protocols and our policies in place and our reporting. We appointed Jennifer Johnson as the health, as the primary health officer to coordinate that once we were put in a position to adopt regulation. Not that we were already doing some of those things, but we had to formalize it through the Department of Labor's regulations and develop, you know, formalize some of those policies and the reporting requirements. And we have severely limited the amount of cases in the town amongst the employees. And we've never had to be in a position, except for once, I think we had to close down the facility. And it was very early on. We were still learning about this virus. And, and it was on a Friday, I think, or a Monday, I think it was a Monday, when we fogged it. But then we got our own foggers and we didn't have to worry about it. And we were able to contain, we were going to contain it. And we have the facility crews using the foggers and the departments each have a fogger. So thankfully, we've been able to persevere. And it's because of the staff and, and their, their willingness to comply with the regulations and to practice safe, safety at the workplace. So just wanted to recognize that and make sure the council knew that.
Absolutely agree.
That, that we, as a staff, have been very, very diligent on making sure that we don't disrupt town operations by, you know, shutting down a whole department.
Sure. But, but thank you, everybody, for all your hard work. And like I said, the employees, we have great employees, we really do. Take great pride in that. But thank all you. Not to Terry too long, last but not least, we have appointments to boards and committees. Item number one, Sinking Springs Cemetery Committee, appointment to fill the expired term of Carol Ann Lee, who is ineligible to serve an additional term. Counsel, I, I think I understand correctly that we don't need to go into closed session, that you guys feel comfortable making that nomination. So I would entertain a motion to appoint somebody to that board.
Our motion, we appoint John LaGuard to the Sinking Springs Cemetery Committee.
Motion by Mr. Owens to appoint John LaGuard to the Sinking Springs Cemetery Committee. Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Webb?
Aye.
Just one addendum related to that. There's been a case that's been going on in Tennessee for maybe over a year now regarding a trust. And one of the beneficiaries of the trust is Sinking Springs Cemetery. And so the cemetery will be getting a small bequest once that's finally resolved, which is going to be soon. The lawyer who's representing the trust has asked me who to make the check out to, so be a small, a few hundred dollars.
Hey, we'll take it.
A few hundred dollars we didn't have yesterday, right?
Yeah, right? Thanks, Kim, yeah. That's good news, very good news. All right, did we miss anything, counsel? All right, having, having nothing else to do, let's adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much for coming out and thanks for the update. All right, guys, what do we miss? Anything?